Good afternoon and welcome to the April 23rd, 2025 Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop. Today is our first budget workshop for the fiscal year 26, fiscal year 27 biennial budget process. Before introducing our county administrator for opening remarks, I would like to remind everyone that this is a budget workshop. And as such, there will be no public comment today. The public will be able to comment during our July and September budget public hearings. Also, as this is a workshop, we will not be taking any votes today. A couple of more notes, Commissioner Hagan is not available due to a prior commitment. And Commissioner Wustel is attending virtually. And I'd also like to note that we're in this alternate location today due to some building maintenance. With that, I'll turn it over to Bonnie Wise, our county administrator, for the opening remarks.
Thank you. Today is an important day. Not only is it the first of two budget workshops prior to delivering the fiscal year 26 recommended budget, which I'll do with the July 16th regular meeting, it's also Commissioner Myers' birthday. So, happy birthday Commissioner Myers. All right, so now we got the fun stuff out of the way. And so, as Commissioner Miller mentioned, we'll have our second budget workshop on May 28th. And the topics we are recommending for that workshop for your consideration include the nonprofit policy, as well as the discussion of the solid waste system, and anything else that you would like to discuss at that time. And you can also schedule other workshops as well. And Kevin will go through the timetable with you, and you'll see what's available. During today's workshop, Kevin Bricky is going to provide an overview of the budget, including how the funding is allocated among the uses of the budget as a whole, as well as our two general funds, that's where he'll specifically concentrate, the countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund. And those are the two funds that the board has the most discretion on in spending. As you're aware, and Kevin will reiterate this, it's the unincorporated area general fund where we have the most financial pressures. And that's due to growth and the need to continue to enhance public safety. And after Kevin has gone through his presentation, Tom Fessler is going to provide an update on the CDBGDR program, which is the CDBG disaster recovery program, and give you an update on that and the timetable and the grant activities associated with that program. And so now we'll turn it over to Kevin Bricky to present.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Hi, good afternoon Commissioners, Kevin Bricky, Director of Management and Budget. And as Ms. Wise just mentioned, this is the first workshop for our biennial process, which will conclude in September where the board will adopt an FY '26 budget and a planned FY '27 budget. One of the first things that we do at the start or beginning of a budget process is sort of review where we are and have that as a baseline. The management budget department, we are proud that we have received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award since 1986. And we look forward to receiving that as we build this two-year budget as well. We have received a fair amount of positive comments from the three credit agencies. Those three credit agencies are those New York agencies that have rated the county's general obligation debt at AAA. One of a few counties to have received that. And the credit agencies have noted strong economic fundamentals for the county, strong reserves, supporting that credit rating, that credit rating, and strong financial management. As I mentioned, we do have AAA from all three agencies. And that has been since 2010. Our reserves are about, are between 20 and 25 percent. And it fairly well matches the state. The state has a AAA rating from the same three agencies. Their reserves are similar percentages. Debt per capita is a little bit higher for us, although some debt is maturing as we move forward. We are pleased that we have quite a lot of transparency and oversight as we go through the budget process, as we go through the year, as the budget is executed. We have oversight from the state, particularly for the truth and millage process. That's where the board sets the millage rates, which is a very prescribed process by the state and by state rules and state law. And each year, we have to be certified by the state, and we have been certified consistently. We have oversight from state grant-making agencies, federal grant-making agencies, audit from the clerk's office, and others. And those are just a few areas where we are involved with transparency and oversight. The FY '25 budget that the board adopted last September for the year beginning October 1 was $10.331 billion. This is looking at that budget broken down into some large categories. Reserves, capital, the capital program, and transfers are all a little bit over $2 billion apiece. And the operating budget is about $3.9 billion, or 38 percent of the total budget. The general funds you see there are about $1.6 billion. And then the rest of that operating budget is broken out in some other restricted funds, which have to do with revenues that are restricted to certain uses, debt service, and our enterprise funds, which are our water and solid waste operations. This is looking a little bit more in detail at that $10.331 billion and that $3.97 billion of operating. The largest area is the sheriff, which is about $653 million, fire rescue about $293 billion. That's nearly 30 percent of the total overall budget. When adding in our enterprise funds, our healthcare services, that's nearly 51 percent of the total overall operating budget. In FY '25, our revenues, our current revenues, about $4.2 billion. A third of that, a little over a third of that, 36 percent is from ad valorem property taxes, almost $1.5 billion. And speaking of ad valorem property taxes, the taxable values that the property appraiser certifies each year, along with the millage rates, are the baseline for property taxes. And this graph looks at the growth in taxable value over some time. Over the last 20 years, it's averaged about 5.67 percent. A few years ago, we were growing at about 15 percent. As inflation rose and interest rates rose and the economy slowed, housing markets have slowed. And the rate of growth in taxable value has, excuse me, has responded over those past three years. This year, in the countywide taxable value, we had about 6.8 percent growth. We expect that will decline a little bit more to about 6.3 percent. The general funds, these are the areas where the board has the most discretion on how dollars are spent. The countywide general fund, FY '25 is about $1.5 billion. The first two bars represent 55 percent of the countywide general fund. That's the sheriff. This is primarily the sheriff's detention and court operations, and other constitutionals and elected officials. That's about 55 percent. Human services is third, at $79 million. So after those first two, it tends to decline fairly rapidly. So this countywide general fund funds those areas that we saw on the previous graph. There are services that are provided to all residents, whether they live in the unincorporated area or one of the three cities. The operating property tax millage in the countywide general fund is 5.6026 mills. That is a decline from FY '24 of 5.7309. And that millage on a house with an assessed value of $350,000 results in a tax bill for the countywide general fund of about $1,680 on a home. These services, again, the sheriff, primarily the jail operations, clerk of the court, supervisor of elections, tax collector, property appraiser, the other constitutional officers, court operations, human services is provided by the board to all residents, not just unincorporated. We have conservation, lands, affordable housing, the medical examiner, pet resources. That's something the board provides across the whole county. Our other operating general fund is for the unincorporated area, our unincorporated area general fund. That's about $829 million. Here, public safety accounts for 68 percent of this fund. Fire rescue, about $272 million, and the sheriff, $192 million. Here, this is the sheriff's, primarily the sheriff's law enforcement or patrol operations. So the sheriff is funded from both funds, depending on the function. Public works, $103 million. Conservation and parks, another important service to unincorporated residents, about $46 million. Now, this unincorporated area general fund, it funds the types of services that if you lived in the city, the city would be providing. So the cities provide police service, the cities provide fire and rescue service, the cities provide parks to their own residents. For those in the unincorporated area, the board is the one that provides those services. That's to about nearly 1.1 million people in that unincorporated area. If it were its own city, it would be the largest city within the state. The operating millage in the unincorporated area is 4.4745 mills, and is assessed on unincorporated area properties only. That's about $1,342 on an assessed value of $350,000. That's a tenth of a mill higher than it was in FY '24. That was due to the millage swap that was approved by the board, where the millage in the countywide area declined by a tenth of a mill in exchange for a millage increase in the unincorporated area by a tenth. The unincorporated area millage is still significantly lower than in the cities for the same types of services. The city of Tampa's millage is above six, Temple Terraces is above six mills, and Plant Cities is just below six mills. And again, these services are those types of municipal services, fire rescue, patrol operations, public works, parks, code enforcement. As Ms. Wise mentioned, our unincorporated fund is the one that over time we have had challenges in funding as population growth in that unincorporated area has been very strong, resulting in strong increases in service demand, particularly as areas have urbanized. And that has presented challenges, for instance, with fire rescue, with new stations and response times. Yet since 2000, the board has provided funding for five new stations since 2000, seven replacement stations, seven additional rescue units, and amphibious vehicles. That does help with response times since 2000. Response times have gone down by 3.5 percent, while population and calls have been up by 6 and 8 percent. So there has been progress, but it still is a challenge with that growing population and with existing service challenges within fire rescue. Law enforcement, again, here is a case where response times are a concern for the sheriff's office. And it's staffing. The sheriff has been a great partner in recent years and has had relatively modest increases. That was partly due to the fact that the sheriff had a number of funded vacancies. Those vacancies will be filled and not available after this fiscal year. So we expect there to be some significant requests for staffing from the sheriff. Transportation with backlogs and accommodated growth, and parks as well, those are all challenges within that fund. In FY '25, as we mentioned, the property tax revenue in these two funds, the two operating funds, countywide and unincorporated, are about $1.3 billion. Looking at the amounts funded for public safety and other elected officials, that's about $1 billion, or 80 percent of that property tax revenue in these two funds. The sheriff is the largest at about $600 million, $632 million, fire rescue, 281, and other elected officials, 136. So it accounts for the lion's share of property tax. Another area where we look to see where we've been in order to see where we might be going is general fund reserves. The board policy is to have general fund reserves between the two funds at 20 to 25 percent in support of our credit ratings, in support of our being able to be flexible in emergencies as well. That, in FY '25, that percentage is 23.8 percent. It has declined a little bit since the peak of 24.1 percent in FY '23. And we expect that that ratio can decline at a modest rate again. Right now, the countywide general fund does support a larger burden on that because the unincorporated fund, as we said, was the one that is challenged. Our capital improvement program is a little over $2 billion. The largest sectors are our water enterprise and transportation. Between those two, that's $1.1, $1.2 billion, more than half. These are some large projects that are currently funded within the capital improvement program. And their budgets in FY '25, bridges and intersections, sidewalk safety projects are currently funded in FY '25 at $273 million. Repaving, $69 million. You see jail maintenance and the sheriff's operations center. There are a number of stormwater, six years, we estimate that we'll have in excess of about $3.1 billion in new capital funding from a variety of sources. The community investment tax, which of course voters approved an extension beginning December 1 of 2026. We also are programming in the recently approved addition of the projects for repaving using the transportation surtax money, that portion that was returned, $28 million. The CDBG disaster recovery allocation, that's $709 million, which Mr. Fessler will be giving you an update shortly, and other areas, including bond proceeds for solid waste. Looking at positions, the county administrator, total positions in FY '25 are about 6,200, which is still below the peak in FY '07 of 6,600. It has increased since the bottoming out in FY '12 at about 5,000. Where is that coming from? It's primarily from those increases and those improvements that I mentioned briefly about fire rescue with new stations. A new station has significant staffing requirements. That has increased from FY '12 at about 900 to about 1,300. Excluding fire rescue positions, the county administrators count has increased since the trough in FY '12 of about 4,000 to 4,900, but still is below the peak of FY '07 of nearly 5,700. Looking briefly at some county comparisons, these are Florida counties with population over a million. There are six of those urban counties. Our population were the third largest at 1.5 million. Broward and Miami-Dade are larger. On a per capita basis, our per capita property taxes are a little bit below the average of the six counties. We're at $828 versus 902 for the average of the six. That also is reflected in looking at property taxes per thousand dollars of personal income. Again, we're at about $31, which is about $5 below a nearly $36 average. Looking at fuel taxes, on average, those six counties, the per capita is about $41. In Hillsborough, it's about $33. Each year over the last many, you know, as we've gone about building a budget for you to consider, we've had a number of guiding principles that we've paid attention to. Adopting a structurally balanced budget, we are required by state law to have a balanced budget. But we also want to make sure that we have a structurally balanced budget, where the amount of ongoing revenue is at least matching our recurring expenditures. the amount of ongoing revenue is at least matching our recurring expenditures such that it is sustainable in the long run. We want to use restricted funds first where possible because those restrictions are in law. For instance, fuel taxes need to be used for transportation, often primarily roads. Maintaining general fund reserves, as we talked about, between 20% and 25%. Again, prioritizing public safety. And then we also pay attention to maintaining the county's current assets, maintaining the county's current service levels. We also pay attention to identifying efficiencies during each budget process and maintaining and supporting our county employees who are so important in getting our day-to-day tasks In FY26, those priorities certainly continue and frame our considerations. Fire rescue, public safety, always a top priority, looking at the possibility for new and/or replacement stations. Solid waste assessment issues will be arising again for this year in FY26. Bonnie mentioned the nonprofit policy will be part of your next budget workshop in May. Again, the CDBG disaster recovery, which we'll hear more about shortly. Impact fee and mobility fees have certain review cycles built in within the ordinances. Those are considerations. The community investment tax, of course, as we move forward and closer to that period where the renewed tax begins. And another consideration that's unusual that comes up for FY26 is that currently the board is levying a general obligation debt millage in the unincorporated area to pay parks and recreation bonds that were issued many, many years ago. Those bonds mature this year and as a result, that debt millage of 0.259 mills will not be required in FY26. So that will be a decline in the total overall millage rate within the unincorporated area. Other considerations, again, we mentioned our estimated ad valorem growth will be about Consideration of another millage swap, as we discussed last year, that that millage swap was perhaps an initial millage swap. More could possibly continue. We're considering that. Better use of technology, heightened scrutiny of operating costs and position vacancies within departments. We're scrubbing those types of things a little more closely. Always constitutional officer requests, various mandates that we have, tax increment financing commissions for the tax collector and the property appraiser, et cetera. Compensation of benefits, the board approved the new IAFF contract. We'll be needing to accommodate that within the budget. Our reserve maintenance policy and of course, department and commissioner requests and priorities are always top on the list. When we look at those opportunities for efficiencies, again, we're looking at county administrator department budgets, operating costs and such, vacant positions, nondepartmental allotments, tightening up on those as well as nonprofits, looking at the efficient use of some restricted revenues and reserves. Our capital improvement program, sometimes we have projects that complete or are old that they, we may have some opportunity to do some changes in scopes and budgeting, value engineering, that sort of thing. And then briefly, again, thinking about millage rates. Our countywide millage rate, as I said, 28% below the peak, which was in FY99, is 7.75 mills. On the unincorporated area, you see on the upper right, the board's unincorporated millage of 4.475, 4.5 compared to the cities, which are a little bit below six or a little bit above 6%. Six mills. So here's some examples of millage swaps as we consider an additional millage swap. Using our estimate, our current estimate of FY or calendar year 2025 taxable value, which will feed into FY26 property taxes. 0.25 mills, that sort of a swap would result in a decline in countywide revenue of about $4.5 billion and an increase in unincorporated revenue of about $2.6 billion. You may recall that anytime we do a millage swap, there is a net decline in tax, property taxes, in this case at O25, $1.8 million. Because as we lower the countywide tech millage, that's also lowering it in the cities and then we're swapping it for a equivalent increase in the unincorporated area. You see examples there for .05 mills and .1 mills. And then the impact of a swap on a home with assessed value of $350,000. At O25, it's an $8 decline countywide, an $8 increase unincorporated. And again, highlighting the fact that this also affects the cities, houses in the cities, an O25 swap will be an $8 decline on their countywide bill for the countywide millage. But of course, the unincorporated millage is not charged in the cities and so it would be a net decline. That should say under total minus eight. As Bonnie said, I'll briefly go over our calendar. We have the budget workshops, of course, today. You see there on the top, May 28 is the next workshop with tentative topics, as Ms. Wise mentioned, nonprofits and our solid waste operations. The property appraiser will be providing early estimates on taxable values in June, on June 1, and the preliminary certified estimates on July 1. Those particular ones will what go, are the ones that will go into determining the FY26 budget, those July 1 numbers. On July 16, the county administrator will deliver her recommended budget at the regular board meeting. On July 30, we'll have our budget reconciliation public hearing where the board will set millage rates. That's the trim process I mentioned. And the board will also go through its flagging process, identifying areas where members may wish to have changes. Those changes can be additions, those changes can be subtractions or realignments. We'll have two public hearings in September. On September 4, you'll adopt the tentative budget in millages and on September 18 will be the final budget in millages. With that, on the agenda, Tom Fessler is next. If you have any questions at this time, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. I think we're going to hold questions until the end?
Either, as you desire.
Great, we'll do that.
Okay. Let me get Tom set up.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. What we wanted to do today is just kind of give you a brief update on where we are with the CDBG disaster recovery funds. We have done a staff report for you before, but we wanted to just kind of give you a status of what's happened since the last time we talked to you about it and see if you had any questions. Basically, on January 21, we received a notification from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that Hillsborough County was receiving $709 million in CDBG disaster recovery funds. These are funds we did not apply for. We did not ask for these funds, so this was kind of something that just showed up. As you can see, the purpose of the funds is basically for necessary expenditures related to several of the hurricanes that have happened in the last few years. It's for long-term recovery, restoration of infrastructure, housing, economic and revitalization for the most impacted or distressed areas. This is kind of a timeline on what has happened. So you can see the funds notification came in back in January, on January 21. Since then, we kind of took a step back, started to learn what these funds were about, what the requirements were, and figure out a way forward. What we quickly realized is, is that we needed help. And so that's why we went out, we did a procurement, we hired Indelible Solutions to come help us draft an action plan. We had a lot of conversations with other counties. This is the approach that all the other counties took, I believe. I think there may have been one county that did create a plan on their own, but it was pretty clear to us that hiring a consultant was going to be what we needed to do to get an action plan approved. That consulting firm, Indelible Solutions, came in a couple of weeks ago. We had a three-day, they were here for three full days. We had a chance to meet with them over that period of time. They asked the questions that they needed to ask in order to be able to, we'll have 45 days to review the plan and get back to us on whether or not it's approved. Based on the federal requirement, the funding must be spent in the following categories. Those would be housing, economic revitalization, infrastructure, mitigation planning, public service and administration. So the key there is that when we, part of the development of the action, as part of the development of the action plan, there had to be an unmet needs assessment that was done. There's kind of a standard methodology that's completed and the consulting firms know what that is and how to do it. So Indelible Solutions has completed that process. And when we met with them, we kind of went over the results of that. So that's going to be where the majority of the funds will be spent, were in those first three categories there. The action plan, so what does the action plan do? Well, the action plan provides a broad conceptual overview of how we intend to use the funds. It identifies programs and partners. It sets a budget at a high level. Our action plan, we had, board had approved and we had requested to HUD to extend the deadline for us submitting the action plan. So now the deadline date is July 20. As I said, the board will ask the board to approve the plan on July 16. The other thing that the plan does is that the plan must be based on, as I said, unmet needs. And then finally, what we've been told by our consultant is, as we're, you know, as we got a little bit uncomfortable about maybe at times where this thing was headed and what it looked like, you know, what we've clearly been told by the consultants is that every action plan is at some point modified, probably multiple times as you go through the process of expending the funds, seeing where the needs are, those change. You don't know all those exactly upfront, so at some point, those plans do evolve. General parameters, so the key is, and the primary thing is that 70% of the funds must meet and must benefit low to moderate income individuals in areas. All the expenditures also must be tied to the disaster event in some way, with the exception of the mitigation category, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. Once the plan is approved, we have up to six years to spend the funds. And the programs that we will implement will probably be a combination of either directly run by us through sub recipients. As I say, sub recipients, those could be, as a, for instance, we've had the cities participating with us in the workshop that we had with Indelible. The cities were all invited, they all showed up. And then also will, you know, everything must be through a competitive process. So we're probably going to be, use a combination of all of those. Some keys, the projects and programs that we select, they cannot supplant funding. So we can't have an existing program or capital project that we've had funds committed to or have an identified funding source at this point. Those will not be eligible. These have to be new things. And then the requirements for the expenditures is they must be in compliance with what's called the universal notice, which is issued by HUD. It's a set of guidelines. They're very extensive, they're very stringent. There's a lot of flexibility in the use of the funds, but you have to abide by all the guidelines and those can be, you know, somewhat administratively burdensome. Just quickly going through some of the areas, you can see on the various areas how the funds are typically spent. This is consistent with the other counties that we've looked at and their action plans. You can see single-family housing, multifamily, special housing, and that might, an example of that might be for homeless, manufactured housing. The key across some of these areas is that when we say housing, it's not necessarily a commitment of funds for, let's say, a new housing project. What it could be in addition to that is that second to last bullet there, a lot of it could be housing infrastructure. So if there's an area that flooded and it's, let's say, and it's a low to moderate income area and it flooded because we didn't have adequate stormwater infrastructure or stormwater ponds or something of that nature, we can spend a lot of the funds on those types of projects and it can, those can qualify as housing. So that's a key. We think that we're going to be spending probably a lot of the dollars in that way and the, probably in the majority of the dollars of the $700 million, probably on infrastructure type projects, larger infrastructure type projects. That would be our recommendation to the board. Economic revitalization, as you can see there, for our typical types of economic development type activities, again, those can include infrastructure. So a key there would be, as our consultant said, you don't want to go out there and if a business has lost a lot of their property within their business or equipment or inventory or things like that, they're not recommending that you go out and try to reimburse them for that. There's a FEMA process, there are other ways that can be reimbursed. However, on the, under the infrastructure area, if that's in an area where a lot of businesses lost a lot of those types of things, again, if it's, if it's, they lost it because of flooding, then maybe we do some infrastructure projects. So next time a storm comes through, they don't flood, they don't lose that inventory or that equipment again. Then you have the standard typical infrastructure. The key to all of these is you have to tie all these back to the storms. There are various ways to do that. We intend to continue to use consultants to help us with that. We also can get, can get technical assistance from HUD to help us with that to make sure that we don't have any missteps as we go along in the process. And the mitigation, this is the category where you don't have to tie back directly to the storms. You can have a lot of infrastructure type projects. You can choose things that will make the community more durable when it comes to the next storm that comes through or next disaster event. You can harden buildings, you can elevate structures, a lot of stormwater type things. And again, in this category, which you have to spend at least 15% of the funds on this, you do not have to have a direct tie to the storm. You can spend some, up to 15% on planning. Typically, you don't spend that much on planning. It's a much smaller percentage, as you can see, the various types of plans there that could be reimbursed. Public service, you can have job training programs, mental health and health services, again, has to tie back to the storm in one way or another. One thing that was clear to us from the consultants is that they're saying, we need to have something in the plan related to homeless population. HUD will require that. It doesn't necessarily means that it has to be some large dollar amount, but they will certainly be looking for some homeless type services. And then finally, I believe this is the last slide, that some of the do's and don'ts from our consultant is they're indicating that when you start off your, your programming and where you're going to spend, you know, spend your funds and implementation, focus on your 70% requirement first. Target those projects so you can make a lot of headway towards that 70%. And then on the backend, you can have a little bit more flexibility possibly in the way you use the funds. Focus on large shovel-ready projects. They are not recommending, we will have it in there as part of the recommendation to the board in the action plan that, they also said, make, create your plan so that you have, so that you have a lot of flexibility in it, but they're not recommending a large amount of dollars going towards housing elevations, which they're saying you just, they don't see the return on investment on that. There are some pitfalls that go along with that. If you're raising homes in an area that got flooded, that area can still get flooded the next time the storms come through. They also indicated that, you know, if you're raising a house, you know, something happens to the house and... to the house and it falls apart, you know, that creates all sorts of other issues. They're indicating, they're recommending to not cross the threshold of businesses. I think what they mean by that is, to the extent possible, avoid direct assistance type programs to businesses. Create infrastructure that helps businesses, create programs that help businesses, but avoid those direct assistance type programs. And one of the reasons they're indicating is, you're going to have a lot of reporting requirements related to the funds and how they're used. By the time you end up, at the end of your six years, you want those reporting requirements to be over. And if you have direct assistance type programs, a lot of times, that will require reporting that can go out 10 years, 12 years or more. And then finally, well, the final bullet is, avoid, avoid programs where you end up with monitoring requirements beyond the six years. And with that, I'm available for questions also.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you all for great presentations, Mr. Bricky and Mr. Fessler, I appreciate that. I'm now going to open it up to the floor for the commissioners. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank both of you for your presentation. Just commenting on the budget overview, this is such a great document that all of us can use as a guide as we move through this process. It's very comprehensive and I appreciate that. And already laying out some of the different scenarios that are going to exist, I think will give us a lot of time to look at this prior to when we really have to start making decisions. So I wanted to just ask about the CDBG presentation, actually. You mentioned that they're, that the consultant is going to be coming back to us on June 4th, or thereabouts. And it strikes me that Black and Beach is also coming back to us in June with their report. I'm wondering to what degree you're planning on integrating what they come up with into this plan, because it would seem to me the two are extremely related to one another.
You're right on, you're right on point, Commissioner. We've had a lot of discussions about that and making sure that we are, you know, staying connected to the Black and Beach process. They're having public meetings, we have to have public meetings, so we're trying to make sure that we don't confuse the public when we're having the Black and Beach meeting and then we have a meeting over here for the CDBGDR. We're trying to figure out the best way to have that communication go out to the public such that the public's not confused on what we're doing.
Well, I'm, I'm more, I'm actually more concerned about us getting confused about what we're doing in the sense that, I'm hoping, because the time, there's going to be a very short window between when Black and Beach reports to us and when the consultant's going to deliver the report, if any, there's any window at all. But there's going to be a short window between both reports coming in in July 20th and we have to adopt the plan. And I want to make sure that Black and Beach's recommendations are integrated into what we adopt on July 20th, because it's my expectations, based on what they're hearing out there, that they're going to have some very concrete suggestions about some of these different areas that they've been studying that need, that need mitigation. So that, that's my, that's sort of my first question is just, or not so much question, but sort of, I just think an alert to all of us that we need to make sure to make very good use of that overlapping period when we have the information and are preparing what, what we're going to seek funding for. And then I guess that the second part of that is, I'm hoping that the commissioners will have an opportunity to talk to the consultants about the plan prior to us passing it, because, you know, we've all been going out to these different community meetings and the things that people are concerned about may not necess, you know, we're in a very good position, I think, to communicate that to the consultants as they're building the plan. I mean, we, I heard a lot last night about maintenance and when I think a lot of us hear that everywhere we go. So I think it's important that we have an opportunity to, you know, emphasize those things in this, in this plan. And then my, my wrap-up question on this is, to what degree are, to what degree are we confident, does it still appear as though the funding is going to come as promised?
Right. We do not have any indication the funding will not come as promised. As we were meeting with the consultants, that was, a lot of the discussion revolved around the fact that this is a, that these, these plans over time have evolved. And so they, they indicated that these plans have become more of an overview. Instead of trying to really drill down into, you know, specific individual programs with a lot of detail, they're now being created in such a way, and they, as we, as they were guiding us through this, that they are created in such a way to create a lot of flexibility, create budgets at a high level. So the action plan is kind of a starting point. So we might say, we want to commit, you know, $200 million to stormwater. That doesn't mean we've identified stormwater projects or the areas yet, that's, comes with implementation. So, so that'll give us that opportunity to kind of take those Black and Beach recommendations and really build them into our plan.
And should, once we've built this process and had it approved and we have a plan and we're, and we're working our plan, if there's additional items that are left, as I'm sure there will be, on Black and Beach's list, is the, is the place to consider those things then in the CIT discussion? Is that where, where that will eventually come up?
I think it's probably a combination of looking at all available funding sources. So I think it would be, because we do have funds built into CIT for, for stormwater, and now we have this other source of funding that when we were going through the CIT renewal process, we didn't even know was going to be available. So now it's going to be how do all these fit together to kind of meet all the needs?
I guess what I'm asking, it's, they were very clear that this funding can't supplant other funding, but it's not, it's not clear that it can't go the other way around. We can't do, do a needs assessment and get what we can from this and then turn to other sources of funding to finish the job.
I would say, one example they gave us, they said, if you've, let's say, let's say there's a road project. If you've done PDNE on a road project, that project's not going to qualify. You've already spent money on it, so that's, it shows an intent to fund the project. So that, that would have to be off the table. If we've done a study that says, we need stormwater infrastructure in this neighborhood and it's in a low to moderate income area, we haven't, we haven't specifically before that study identified that as something we've spent any money on or something where we've committed any funding, that could qualify.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wustel, you're recognized.
Thank you. And yes, I planned to be there in person and tell what happened outside of my office, so I just left. On the CDBGR thing, I'll just start there real quick. Who's going to decide the ratios for those top three, housing, economic revitalization and infra? Who's creating that plan?
So Commissioners, our Commissioner, our consultant, Indelible, they've got somebody that specializes in doing the unmet needs part. They've come up with, based on the unmet needs, they've identified percentages for those areas. Having said that, our action plan, while our action plan should follow close, somewhat closely to those percentages or, or take those into account, the unmet needs, they don't have to match exactly. So we have kind of an initial framework that's been given to us through the unmet needs assessment. Ultimately, it'll be the board that approves that, that budget and where the percentage, you know, how to allocate across the various categories by percentages. So it's, it's up to the board eventually. So that's what we'll bring back, that's why we'll bring back an action plan on, a draft action plan on June, June 4th. And then after that point in time, the board can certainly make, make alterations or modifications to it.
So you don't, you have, you don't have an idea yet of what those percentages are?
The biggest percentage is going to be in the housing area. We had some questions about that when we saw the unmet needs study. What, the way it was kind of put back to us was, we are submitting an action plan to HUD and housing is what they do. So, you know, while we may look at it and say, we think the, the housing percentage is a little high, I think we're, we've kind of ratcheted that back, well, we're just present something to where we ratchet that back a little bit. But at the same time, you know, as I said, these action plans, you can do modifications to them later on. So if we go into the housing area and we have these three programs and we're not spending the money in those areas or seeing the need, we can always reallocate. But again, it'll be the, the board's opportunity to change those percentages as they see fit.
Okay. And we're approving this on, in June? This plan that we haven't seen yet?
We're bringing an action, an action, a draft action plan to you to open up a 30-day public comment period. So you won't be approving the final plan on June 4th, that'll be on July 16th.
Okay. My other questions are just very broad and brief. To what percentage are you funding? Is the administrator recommending you fund the annual road maintenance and repaving program in this year's budget?
Commissioner, I don't have a percentage right now. We do have the, I believe it was currently, was it $69 million? We know there are continuing unmet needs. There's also the dollars from the transportation surtax. And we are looking at further possibilities of adding dollars in FY '26, but I don't have that percentage right now.
But the $69 million that's in your overall budget, is that new money or is that rollover funding?
That's currently what is in the FY '25 budget.
Okay, so that's not lingering rollover funds?
Some of it will likely roll over into FY '26.
Yeah, see, this, this is where we get into the, this isn't transparent part of the budget hearings every year. I, I just want to know, and these are very basic questions, in a budget workshop, talking about the budget, so we should be prepared to talk about the budget, which is, how much of the annual maintenance, it's our number one issue. No Commissioner's Office receives more complaints about anything than roads. So do we have any idea how much new funding is based off of the, I don't want numbers for repaving the over decade of backlog that we have of complaints, which is an issue of itself? Just of the annual amount, we have an idea it's about 95 to 100 million dollars a year to repave appropriately in terms of our index's requirements, that it costs about 100 million dollars a year. How much of that 100 million dollars is the administrator proposed in this budget of not rollover funds? Do we have any idea?
And I'll, I'll let you answer, Kevin, too, but I just want the board to understand that we have not crafted the fiscal year '26 budget. This is the part of the process, we have gone out to our departments, we have asked them for their decision units, we are evaluating those, and the budget is not yet crafted. And so that's why we want to have this budget workshop with you, to let you know where we are, what we're seeing, what we're seeing on property values, what was happening in the fiscal year '25, what, where we see the year ending, but we have not, it is not buttoned up by any means at this time. And that's where your input will help us in developing that budget.
Commissioner, also maybe this will help. So when we do deliver the budget, I know there was a slide that we presented at one of the final budget public hearings last year that was specifically related to transportation and our commitment to, and our investments in transportation. We'll update that slide for the budget delivery on July 16th and we'll have that available.
So, okay, so we won't hear until July, but in July, that's also, is that also not like the deadline for when we do our maximum amount of property tax, our trim?
That's the trim process where at that budget reconciliation public hearing, the board does adopt an initial millage rates, and those, except under an extraordinary circumstances, are the maximum that the board can adopt at the final budget public hearings.
Okay. So the answer is that we don't know then. Talk to me very briefly about the current levels of reserves of the indigent healthcare surtax.
The current reserves of the indigent healthcare surtax are, I believe it's approximately 400 million. It has slowed in its rate of increase as the growth in that particular revenue, that sales surtax revenue, has slowed significantly. It rapidly increased in 2021, 22, and partly in 23 as, as sales tax growth was very extraordinary, you know, 15, 20%. That growth has slowed to about a flat, maybe a couple of percentage points. And so the increase in that revenue has declined. Also, in the, excuse me, in the FY '25 budget, the board also approved uses for the sheriff, for indigent healthcare in the jail, and usage for fire rescue for indigent purposes as well. So we have those ongoing and we're looking at those for FY '26 as well.
How much of a percentage of the sales tax was able to be, ended up being used? The, the use for the sheriff and for fire rescue separately, do you know what that number is?
The use for the sheriff was 15.7 million, the use for fire rescue was 5 million.
I'll just bring it up to my colleagues, we have a really serious problem. This tax is an annual tax of 200 million dollars a year. That budgeted reserves for that are now at 200% of that annual amount. And it's something that we really probably need to address as a body. This is a very old tax, unique to its kind, that was placed on its citizens without a vote of its actual constituency back in the early 90s. And we've reached really a boiling point to where it's, we have to decide if, if we're going to be elected officials that have taxes in place and we're going to govern by, let's figure out ways to maximally spend the amount that we're taxing, or if we're going to be elected officials that say, hey, this was put in place for an original amount, which was only 6 million dollars a year. That same purpose, which was to reimburse the differences of the Medicaid, that amount over the past three decades has only grown to about 20-something million dollars a year from that 6. Unfortunately, we're taxing, instead of that 20 million plus dollars a year, we're taxing our constituency 200 million dollars a year, and now it has a budget of reserves of 400 million dollars, which is a big problem that we're going to have to take action on and probably ask the legislature for help in addressing. Similar to like what they did in 1996, it's become untenable at this point. And, and as we've heard many times, the term, we, we worked creatively or innovated our spending, it just is just other ways for us to say that we have found ways to maximally spend and burden our taxpayers rather than finding ways to reduce those impacts where the needs just aren't there. So I look forward to the next budget hearings. I, I, I hear the words transparency, but this, this overview really doesn't give us the answers of how it's addressing the number one needs that we hear about every single day in Hillsborough County, which is, when are you going to fix our sidewalks and when are you going to fix our roads? Whatever place is second to that, I'm not sure. But I will yield, Madam Vice Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Bowles, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Gentlemen, there we go. I appreciate everything you're doing and the presentation as well. I have questions for both of you, since Kevin, so you're sitting there, I'll hit you first. Can you, the, on the projected slide, we have 6.3% for the next year projected. And I'm, knowing you, it's probably a little conservative, but that's okay, and I'm fine with that. But with that, that 6.3%, is that the 6.3% of the 4.15 billion, or is that, and does that include both countywide and unincorporated? What is that 6.3% of what number?
That 6.3% is the projected increase in the countywide taxable value. That 6.3% is the projected increase in the countywide taxable value. So if millage rates were to stay the same, then countywide taxable property tax revenue, or countywide property tax revenue would also increase by 6.3%. In recent years, the unincorporated area has been growing a little bit more slowly when it comes to taxable values, and we're looking at that at somewhere around 6%, a little bit lower. Again, if millage rates were to stay the same, that would translate into a 6% increase in property tax revenue for that fund.
So, and that would then more or less translate, if we used the 4.153, just today's number is 260 million?
That 4.513 includes things in addition to the property taxes. I think on that slide, it showed property taxes were about $1.5 billion.
Okay.
Then there are others, so that only applies to that.
So it's only to the ad valorem?
Correct.
Portion, not to the enterprise funds?
That's right.
Okay. So then it, so that number is actually, that grows, is growing smaller than what I perhaps thought it was?
It has decreased in recent years, that rate of growth.
Second question, the 21%, so in '25, countywide reserves dropped, or were at '25, and then unincorporated dropped to '21. Is that related to anything we had to do with pulling money out of those reserves to take care of some of the damages and cleanups? Or is that totally in separate aside from that? Does that have to do with actual money?
We've been fortunate in that's separate. The board has a catastrophic reserve. It's a separate reserve from the general fund reserves. And during the past storm season, the board did access those reserves for the response and particularly for debris removal. The board did access those catastrophic reserves without affecting general fund reserves.
Okay, so they're two totally separate things?
Yes.
So that's basically just growth on the money we had in there, was just less than what we had in the other?
Pardon me, say that again, please?
Growth as far as investment growth, or I'm certain, it's sitting there, but it's not just sitting there?
Oh, the catastrophic reserve?
Yeah.
The clerk does invest balances, and so we can earn interest on that.
Okay, and what is that balance now? Are we building that back up?
So the reserve?
And how are we doing that? Because I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Two-part question.
Yeah, the reserve, the catastrophic reserve on October 1st was $129 million. The board took two or three actions to access those reserves and reduce those reserves to $29 million. In other words, the board chose to use $100 million of the reserves for that response. And so we will be looking at how we can build reserves, catastrophic reserves again. I don't think that we should anticipate replenishing those in total, but we are certainly looking at that as an important part of the process. We have, in the budget in past years, we have transferred some general fund resources to that. We also will have the opportunity to transfer some reimbursements that we've received from FEMA for other events. And so we think we'll be able to make a pretty good dent in rebuilding those catastrophic reserves as we especially approach a new season.
Right, right, and that's kind of where this leads my mindset is going. And with that, if I recall, with the use of those funds and using it from there, we were fast-tracked, didn't FEMA fast-track the reimbursement for this in this particular case?
There was a fast track.
Based on how we were auditing ourselves and doing a lot of going out taking pictures and making, so they could show there was a direct?
Yes, I mean, we try to, as quickly as we can, get damage estimates, get in our projects to FEMA for reimbursement, to the state. This year, for this event, there was an opportunity to file, what is it called? Fast projects, I can't think of the word right now, fast projects with FEMA, particularly for debris removal where they would be able to offer us about 50% at a much quicker rate, because FEMA reimbursements often can take?
Slow.
Yeah, they're slow, sometimes years.
Right.
And so we did mention, and the board, I think, approved an item where FEMA approved about an $80 million fast reimbursement for debris removal, but that's half of debris removal, which is about $160 million. So we still have a number of other reimbursements to go through.
Right, okay, so but out of the 129, we may get 80 million back?
That's, yes, at a much quicker rate.
Correct, which hopefully, quick means months, years? I know, again, FEMA, I know we're still getting stuff from Ivan and, you know, back and, you know?
Hopefully it means months.
Okay, so we're not having to dig deeper into reserves, which could then create more issues?
Yes, sir.
With the reduction of our percentages?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as we're speaking right now, our legislature in Tallahassee is, you know, throwing rocks at each other. The Senate and the legislature trying to figure out how to balance their budget and how they're going to affect us. Do we have any type of safety net to kind of essentially, we're talking about sales tax reduction, we're talking about removal of property taxes if you have a home set exemption. We're talking about, there's another bill that's coming through that's talking about, you know, on second homes, then removing those property taxes. We're projecting, I don't know, a couple hundred million, let's just say, you know? And where do we, are we thinking that if those pass, which it may be? It may, it may have a very strong likelihood. It's not going to end on May 2nd, based on the 72-hour cooling period. I mean, they'd have to have everything done by Tuesday of next week. That's not going to happen. I mean, that's obvious, they're nowhere near being done. They're still about $2 billion away from each other. With that being said, what are we doing to basically think about the alternatives that may come, that we have no control over?
Well, in addition to catastrophic reserves, which also can also be used for revenue shortfalls, we also have stabilization reserves and such. Now, those are usually something that are used for one-time events. A permanent reduction in a revenue would, we would need to look at other things as opposed to just reserves, because reserves are a one-time thing. And so as we build the budget, and the county administrator builds a recommended budget, as we do in every year, we consider what we think revenue growth will be and what we think will happen with any particular revenue. So as in past years, we take a conservative approach to requests for expansion of services and things like that. So, you know, we have those in the back of our mind.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to say something, and that was partly why we, Kevin included the slide that was on page 15, that showed that our property tax revenues are $1.3 billion, but the sheriff uses $632 million, and fire rescue, $281, because we really wanted you to see the magnitude of how important property tax is to us. So we don't really have an answer if property tax was eliminated, if there wasn't a substitute revenue source.
Well, and too, while I do respect my colleagues in Tallahassee, and, you know, I have many friends there, I think that the chant of reducing property taxes sounds great from there, but when the bread and butter of it comes back to some of these counties, we're doing a pretty decent job of taking care of ourselves here and doing it fairly responsibly. The numbers do show that. However, I think that we need to be mindful that it probably, something's coming, and it's going to be a reduction of sort, wherever it is, and that 6% may squeeze down to 3%, or it could be 1% or 0, who knows? So I just think that in the back reminds me to think about that, which kind of, flipping pages, excuse me. So if we look at, we have May 2nd, let's just assume it goes another week beyond May 2nd, the legislative session, seven days. That puts us basically three, two and a half weeks before May 28th. I can't see us not being, not knowing what happens, it didn't having to readjust. Do we have another opportunity, or maybe another, at least one or two opportunities to talk about this, that we can really dig into what may be coming down the pipe?
Well, certainly the board is able to set additional workshops at its discretion. These can also be discussed at regular meetings as well, so there are opportunities. Bonnie, did you?
And individual meetings with you, of course, in between.
Well, I think because of the gravity that may, that may come with us, you know, we have an agenda sort of set for the May 28th. I think we really should consider that as a board and, you know, as staff, to kind of prepare for at least one more of these, so that we can adjust if we need to, what we're doing, looking forward. And if we can, you know, kind of come up with some dates, I'd certainly appreciate that. I'm not sure if our other, I know we all have other things going on, but this is, yeah. It might be good, at least to put it out, to be transparent and out in the open about what's coming and how we can address these issues that may be out of our control.
I was going to say too, especially after the legislative session's over, we'll also have better information on the effects.
And that's my point.
Right.
It should be over next week. If they haven't got anything done today, the 29th, and then they have a 72-hour cooling off period before they, you know, before the session, and so it has to be done by the 29th. And they're not anywhere close to being done right now, so just food for thought.
Yes.
So, thank you. I do have one question for you, Mr. Fessler. Thank you. Lot easier, I think. I love you, Kevin. The allocation of funds, we talked about allocation of funds per individual in each one of the, you know, how we can use them and what those percentages would be. We talked about it, but I want to kind of just reiterate, we're splitting this 700 million with the other municipalities, correct?
We can, and we've talked about doing that and giving them some of that money. They still have to abide by the same rules, however, and that's why they have been very integral part of our process with our consultant as well. Because we're the ones who are ultimately responsible.
We collect and then we can distribute, so?
Yeah, and we don't have the money yet, by the way.
No, 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 yeah. We actually, we're not actually getting it, it's a voucher, it's going to be reimbursement of sorts, correct?
So Commissioner, actually, we've already brought back to you, one opportunity we had was to apply for the 5% administrative piece of the grant upfront. So you've already, we've already got an approval from HUD on that. So those funds, $35 million, should be coming to us, and those are the funds that we're going to use to make sure that we stay in compliance with all our requirements. So as far as the sharing with the cities, you know, as we've been going through this process, I think what we've realized is if you do like, let's say, a housing program, you know, one of the things that they said is, you don't want to have, if you've got a house on one side of the street that's in the city, house on the other side that's not in the city, you don't want to have two separate housing programs running that have different requirements, different, you know, opportunities for maximum awards or something like that. So let's say we were to do a housing program, we probably would be considering a housing program on a countywide basis. So then under that scenario, we might take that housing money off the top. And as you can see, if we have countywide type programs, we might take that one option, would be to take that money off the top, and then maybe the, a bucket that's available for allocation may be a smaller bucket, that's just for specific services in the county and specific services in the city. So that's just something that, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but something to consider.
Well, I can't help but to think that our partners over in the city are interested in having some of their projects done, because like you said, roads don't just stop at one spot, you know, they continue on. I mean, heck, we own Bay Shore, I didn't know that, which I thought was interesting. We should probably fix that road at some point, but that be- Again, do it again, no. That being said, so what I'm getting at is, so the cities, is there some level expectation? Which I think we should have some partnerships with them, absolutely. You know, even though the majority of the residents now live in the unincorporated area, you know, we all live together still. So is there some expectation already from their leaderships that's saying, you know, is the mayor going, hey, we're?
They already sent us a letter.
They sent us a letter? I got that, but are, how we've kind of done the CIT funds? Are we looking, we're still looking at that similar model of kind of, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it that way, and then try to make sure that we're collaborating on that? Because they're going to have, we're responsible, so they're going to have to put the money up front, and then we're reimbursing them, or how's that going to work? Because I just find that problematic.
Well, as far as reimbursement, I'll let Tom answer that, because I don't know the specifics. We originally were thinking a CIT-type model, that, you know, we'd give them their share, kind of the distribution. But as we're learning more about the requirements under this very stringent program, that may or may not be the exact way we do it, but we do recognize that the cities have a lot of infrastructure projects, they have housing projects that they're going to need to address. So some of this money has to go to them to be able to do that. Exactly how we manage that, I think, is still to come before you.
Okay.
But we do recognize it, of course.
All right, so again, you know, they're out there.
We've included them in the process all along, and we intend to continue to include them in the process.
So but to that, to that point, we're still in that, I know we're early in, but, you know, you got to prepare for what may come, so?
As Bonnie indicated, I think I would anticipate when you get towards, especially towards those infrastructure-type projects, that's maybe where the buckets are, that get allocated out.
Right.
We're not going to do an infrastructure project in the city, they're going to do their own. In the county, they're not going to do an infrastructure project for us, we're going to do our own.
Right.
But if you had a housing program that has consistent requirements on a countywide basis, then maybe that bucket comes off the top.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Commissioner? Tom, hey, Tom, stay there, how you doing today? Regarding, well, great presentation by both of you all. But regarding the CDBG, DRA allocation, in your presentation, you mentioned community engagement meetings in a 30-day window. Have we considered some dates yet?
I don't have the dates yet, I was actually trying to, I don't know if we've targeted some dates yet. I need to get back with Cheryl Howell, she's kind of heading that piece up. I haven't been able to connect with her today, I was trying to get those dates.
She probably won't be back till tomorrow, because I was over at the conference where she is right now, so.
Okay.
Okay. Then, you know, the most impactful areas in distress would be the city of Tampa, which most of this falls within my district. And so I just want to make sure that the community knows what we're doing and how we can get that message out to them, and I can help get the message to the community. Because our window is so short, and I don't want people calling us complaining that they didn't have an opportunity to share their comments with us, or what they would like to see done in their community.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure, no, we will make sure we get with our communications department, and as we identify those dates, that we will get the message out, yes.
And then a deadline, when, if we're going to give some of the funding to the other municipalities? I think we need to know as soon as possible and how much, you know, how much we're going to give them. And I know we're going to do an MOU and all that good stuff as well, but I think it would help this board to know what the city of Tampa is going to receive, plant city and Tampa Terrace.
Right, I think Commissioner, so once the action plan's approved and it goes to HUD, as I said, it's a broad structure. There won't be necessarily really specific program information in there yet. That's when I think we get into implementation, which is probably, you know, as we get into the fall and after HUD has approved the plan, we'll have, start to get a much better idea of breaking that down more specifically, and then at that point, be able to determine what allocations might be. As I said, we have six years to spend the funds, so that's the key.
I'll be out of office by then. Oh, yes, I will be. Okay, all right, those are the only questions I have. Just have a couple for you. Kevin, couldn't even think of his name. I just want to go back for the public, I don't have questions. Looking at, I'm on page 12 of the adopted budget, we say 68%. Looking at them on page 12 of the adopted budget, we say 68% of our funding supports public safety.
Yes, in that unincorporated fund.
Okay, I just want the public to understand how we are really using our funds when they're calling for fire and rescue and to the sheriff's office, that 68% of our budget is there, that funding.
Yes, within the unincorporated area, General Fund, that's correct.
That is correct, okay. No, I'm speaking to the public now, but-
Oh, okay.
And talking with you, okay? No, because we hear it all the time, and we're saying public safety is first, and I want the public to understand how much money we are putting into our budget for public safety, 68% that is in this year's budget. That's more than half of our budget, okay? So that the public can understand, I'm talking to the public, but yes, you're there representing also right now. And then we go back to the paving, repaving projects, and I'm on page 18, okay, the second one, because we get a lot of calls to the office regarding repaving, the roads and all of that, you know, I hit a bump and what are we going to do? Well, can you tell the public how much we have right there?
In FY '25, the budgeted amount is $69 million.
Mm-hmm. So we are trying. I just want the public to understand, because I was asked today, oh, you are going to have your workshop, and what about repaving? So I'm just bringing it out, and I'm hoping they're listening, okay? Yeah.
Yeah, and in addition, the $208 million from the transportation SRTAX that the state returned-
Yes.
Was recently added as well.
Okay, so we're going to fix as many potholes and pave, repave as many streets as possible, okay? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll put it on record, thank you.
Commissioner Kamen, Shabeta, you recognized?
Yes, thank you, just like to thank everyone, the entire team that worked to put this budget overview together, and I look forward to working on our FY '26 budget, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of my questions were addressed, but I kind of want a little bit more clarification. Mr. Fessler, these questions are directed at you. I'm going back to the most impacted and distressed areas with the firm, and I do applaud you for hiring a firm going, oh, this is a bigger project than we have staff for, and I do appreciate that. But I want to know sort of, again, tell me how that's determined, and I, I'll tell you where my question's coming from, I feel a little bit like left out of the loop. So how is a firm that I've never met with, how do they know, or how are they determining what are the most distressed areas? I think that can be biased.
I think, I think it's somewhat, I think it's somewhat prescribed, I'm, I'm, sorry, Cheryl's not here, she could explain it much better than me, but like you have CDBG areas, and then you have, I guess, some other redevelopment-type areas that have been identified in the county, so you've got those areas that are already, that are already defined to start with. And then as you, as we go through and, let's say, identify a project in a given area, if you can, there are other ways that, as we go forward, we might identify that an area has low to, is low to moderate income. If we can identify that individuals in that, 51% or more individuals in a particular area through surveys and other methodologies, we can determine our, our low to moderate income, then we can qualify those projects as 100% low to moderate income, counting towards that 70%. So again, it's, there's some already predefined areas in the county that are considered to be LMI.
Okay, so 709 million is a lot of money, and I'm going to take it however it comes, but it feels like it's being very obviously HUD-driven, and so I would hope that maybe Cheryl Howell could come next workshop and be able to answer these questions directly, and I'm going to need some clarification around that. So it's disaster funding, but yet then has these constraints on it, and as you know, you know, respectfully, Commissioner Myers says, well, Tampa was hit hard, come to Plant City. It is, it is, East County got hit so hard, and I don't want us to be overlooked, there are portions of South County, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if, it's already concentrated here, I don't want us to be forgotten, and I'm going to continue to say that out loud. So, and I'm hoping that, to Commissioner Cohen's point about the results coming back, I think we're going to see the level of damage was significant. And so anyways, I just wanted to make sure that I have clear vision on this most impacted and distressed areas and that I have a say and that I agree with it, I guess is my point in that. So I hope that she can come to the next meeting and answer that more succinctly for me. My second question was also around slide four, these April and May meetings, again, she's not here, sounds like she's at a conference or something, she's not here to answer the questions, but we're already, what, it's April 23rd, so the timeline's already off, there's no way that you can properly notice a meeting for April at this point. I, as a Commissioner, know I'm booking into June, are we going to be included in these meetings, or are we supposed to just sort of work around it? I guess what I'm saying is I feel like we're the ones who represent the body of the people, and we're being left out of this process, that's how I feel about it.
We will get back to you very quickly with the dates for those meetings. I think that the challenge for us has been this has kind of came on, came on us, and we just are trying to, just like they say, drinking through a fire hose, it's, you know, it's, we're trying to move as quickly as we can, we do need to get back to you with those dates so we can give you adequate time, we will do that.
Well, I won't speak for the others, but you can never over-communicate with me.
Yep.
So I like to have that.
You will.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, so we did want to apologize, but, you know, we got notice of this, and we had to quickly ask for the extension, and it's all happening pretty quickly. So we're fortunate that the consultant, we were able to get them on quickly, we did a bid, we, you know, did that really quickly, that was good, we knew that there were other, that there were firms who have done this type of work before, so we have somebody who's done it before. They were here, I guess, last week, the week before.
Week before.
Week before, spent three days here with staff and staffs of the cities, so we're all just trying to catch up, and we will get you caught up as quickly as possible. It may have to be in some individual meetings so that we don't have to wait for a regularly scheduled Board meeting because we're going to need to fill you in and get you information in between.
Okay, okay, noted. Another question I have is related to the budget books, and again, I know last year I was taking in a lot of information really fast, but when will I have the budget book? In what timeframe? Before I have to have a discussion about it in the meeting? Because 24 hours isn't enough for me. So what kind of timeframe can you all promise me that I will have budget book for like, me to comb through it prior to the meeting?
So typically on the recommended budget book, that would be the county administrator's recommended budget book, we would get that to you the night before the morning of the budget delivery, but then a couple of weeks after that is when we have the budget public hearing reconciliation workshop where the millage rates, the tentative millage rates are adopted. So that's where we have kind of that, what we call, as you know, our flagging process and some Board discussion about the budget and what the Board would like to do to the budget over the summer. So it's the county administrator's budget on July 16th, after that time it becomes the Board's budget. So you'll probably have a couple, you'll have a couple of weeks there to evaluate it, ask any questions you want of us, we can meet with you, and then on the, right there at the end of July is when you'll have that opportunity to really, you know, do some things.
So but for clarity, we're, our next meeting, we will only have our hands on it like 24 hours, and we just have to live with it that way. I guess for me, from a scheduling standpoint, you know, I know you have your timelines, but delivering it and then giving us some time so that that meeting has real value, like 24 hours isn't enough time to-
Right, we deliver the budget on the 16th, you don't take action on it until July 30th.
It's delivered at a, at a Board meeting.
At a Board meeting.
So it's just an agenda item at that point.
Okay.
Right.
It's a brief presentation at that time, but no action is taken at that time.
Okay, and then I believe this question would be directed at Mr. Bricki. The 100 million that we took out of the storm response, and I know you talked about timelines and getting money back and refunding that, what if we were to have a very severe storm season again this year? What does that look like for us, and how are we preparing for that?
Well, certainly that's why replenishing those reserves is in high priority. We also have certain separate funds set up so that we can have dollars available to respond immediately. For instance, we have some disaster funds that are set up ready and waiting, they typically have four to $6 million in them in order that we can respond very, very quickly. And then as they're more severe, that's when we do come to the Board and ask for dollars to be moved from catastrophic into those disaster funds. So we are, we have positioned ourselves and will position ourselves to have a similar situation, and then as we get that expedited $80 million, that will also offer us the opportunity. We expect that we will be receiving that rather quickly. So that will be a priority that we have that. Now, outside of that, you know, we have other reserves that are not our first choice to access, but they are there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have any other questions or comments from the Commission or staff? With that, we have, our next meeting will be May 28th, focused on the nonprofit policy and solid waste systems, and I will call this meeting adjourned.